You ready, Bill? Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome into our Wednesday, August 17th, 2022, regular meeting of the Bruce Township Board.
Philbrook?
Here.
Craft? Giorgio?
Here.
Crafty? Here. Tremblay?
Here.
Pledge allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have a chance to take a look at the consent agenda? Is there any... Anybody want to talk about the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 20, 2022? Special meeting of July 28th of 2022? About the bills? Bills, any assertion on that?
I just have a curiosity question. There's four items on the first page or five items that are avoided check range void utility. Can someone just explain why?
So we had an update in BSNA, and when the checks ran, instead of them spelling out the $147, it put all X's in there. And so, once we actually did the update, then the checks...
So you just avoided the checks that were printed wrong?
So we had to avoid the checks and reprint them.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all.
Does anybody have any agenda items that they wanted to change or add or delete? I have two. To add to unfinished business, I'd like to add item B for Menko Timbers. And then item C to unfinished business would be the Parks and Rec. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Consent agenda.
Second by Mike Tremblay?
No.
I'll support, I'll second. Or did Susan?
No, I just said it hasn't been amended.
Okay.
Support by Lisa.
But it's a consent agenda, hasn't made it, right?
It's amended, yes.
Support by Lisa. Can we get a roll call, Dana, please?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Moving on to item... I'm sorry. Right now, we have the part of the meeting where we have comments from the floor of any anybody would like to come up to the podium and comment. We just wish that you would address the board, state your name and your address, and try to keep your comments to a minimum or maximum of three minutes. Does anybody wish to comment at this time? No? Okay.
I have a question. Last month, you called me about a public apology. Is that, was that going to happen during public comment, or?
Hmm, it doesn't look like the parties here at this time.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a statement.
Yeah, it was stated that that party was going to come and make that apology. I did not remind that person.
Okay.
But sure, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement. Mike Philbrook did call me last month and says, asked if I would meet with someone for an apology, and I asked that be made publicly. That person's not here to make it, so I'd just like to make a statement regarding that matter. So, here's my statement. What a contradiction. With all due respect, trustee Tremblay dying on a hill or not dying hill is a load of crap. That was the statement that was made by the president of the Village of Romeo. So my comment is, maybe the attorney should have read this before the statement was made because it showed no respect. Due respect is disagreeing in a tactful and diplomatic manner. The statement that was made was neither respectful, tactful, or diplomatic. As a leader in the community, I would have hoped that there would have been a civil sense of diplomacy. And by the way, I was negotiating an agreement on the new bylaws, something that didn't get done for over 18 months with both boards and a couple of attorneys. So, um... If we just take a couple of things away from that experience, I would hope would be the following. From the movie Bambi, if anyone has seen it, Thumper's mother and father, after hearing a disparaging comment that Thumper made about Bambi, told Thumper, if you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all. I think that's great advice for all people, for all ages and all positions. And another wise person told me many years ago that life is an adventure, followed by an audit. And finally, there's a saying, don't bite the hand that feeds you. With respect to continuing the Parks and Recreation relationship, Washington Township contributes nearly 75% of the funding for Parks and Recreation, including maintenance of all the parks. Rather than make Washington feel like the bad side of 32 Mile Road, we should be thankful that they are part of Parks and Rec because without them, Bruce would be hard pressed to offer anything near what is offered today. So let's work together for the benefit of all.
That's my statement. Thank you, Mike, for letting me do that. Appreciate it. Does anybody else have anything? Now, we'll move on. We have no hearings and reviews for item number five, so we'll move on to item six, unfinished business. First item would be the wastewater treatment plant pump replacement. As you all know, we've covered this subject back in, I want to say, prior to April.
September 2021.
September 2021. We did approve the pump replacement at the wastewater treatment plant from the Village of Romeo. It's our waste, it's our pump station, our lift station. It's our final lift station before a sewer gets dumped into the Romeo Village's wastewater treatment plant. We are responsible for all maintenance and repairs on it. So we did approve back in September to have the pump replaced. I don't remember what the total cost is, but the cost now is $15,709.
Yeah, we agreed to a amount in February of $3,485 that should be in your packet.
So that, that was the amount that was, because when we originally agreed on the price of the pump, it did not include the labor. And the labor price was the $3,000 and some dollars. So when we...
How did we get to $15?
What was the original price of the pump replacement?
We approved $3,485 in February.
That was for the labor that wasn't included in the original pump. So I'd have to go back and, I mean, go back and look at when we did approve it. But I know we've already approved the pump replacement. There was a delay on getting the pumps, obviously, because of everything else. There was a delay on getting parts and...
I don't see anything in here for $15,000. There's, or is there?
Just on the invoice.
Oh, the invoice? So is this the same pump that we approved for $3,485?
So in September of 2021, we approved replacing the pump. There wasn't an amount attached to it. But then you'll see on the next page, it's February 2022, for installation, we approved $3,485.
Which was...
I don't know where the $15,000 is coming from.
So I, I mean, I'll have to do a little bit of work, but I know that we did approve to have the pump replaced with the dollar amount at the time, and it was a price that, we did get an estimated price from Kerr Pump that did the repairs and the replacement. Maybe if you recall, I sent, I brought photos to the board that showed the pump torn apart and all the damage that was done to the pump that we were replacing. Does anybody recall that at all?
Yeah, I do.
Well, I couldn't find anything in the minutes about it.
Well, I'm going to have to go back, and I don't know what the point of it being here. I mean...
Because $15,000 is one where struggling is a lot of money.
Wait, is this the same pump we're talking about, the same pump?
Correct, yeah. At the wastewater treatment plant.
So what you're, what you're, are you, are you proposing a motion to approve the pump with the new price?
So this has already been approved. I just got to go back and find exactly when, you know...
So you're bringing this FYI, but you don't have...
We're on the agenda, so I don't know whoever...
I did because I, the amount was big, and we're all supposed to be making these decisions, voting on this. I couldn't find it. I don't remember $15,000.
I think it was a $21,000 repair that, if I'm not mistaken, that we may have approved.
The only thing showing in the minutes is September of 2021, motion by Philbrook, support by DeGiorgio, to replace the pump at the lift station contingent upon contract verification of responsibility. And then in February of 2022, motion by Philbrook, support by Crafty, to approve pump installation at the WWTP at a cost of $34,85.
So the pump installation was brought to my attention by Al appear, the supervisor over at the wastewater treatment plant, stating that the installation cost was not part of the repair cost that we were originally proposed to approve. So the repair, the installation labor of $3,000 was later approved at a later meeting, separate from when we originally approved the pump price. So these have all been in front of the board once already for approval.
The installation was on too, so we're just not seeing...
But there's no, there's no listing here of the installation price.
You mean in the, in the invoice?
Yeah.
That's why it was added afterwards. So the first price that we had gotten, let's just go off the $15,709, that was approved by the board, not maybe that exact amount, because I know that I think that, if I'm not mistaken, it was $21,000, that we, we agreed to replace the pump. Because of the damage that was done to the pump, it wasn't able to be rebuilt because it was in severely bad shape. We had pictures for everybody at the time.
Right.
And I had a price at the time. And I know that I don't have that price in front of me. I will find it, and I will get back with you on that price. And then this board did approve to replace that pump. The unfortunate thing was, is the price that we did approve to replace it for did not include the labor and installation. And that was where we came back to the board for the $3,000 at a later date to approve the labor and installation.
Yeah, I remember that, that date was February. This invoice came, we received it July 26th. So by then, I would think that installation price was included in here. So it's just, it seems like a contradiction. I don't know.
How do you propose to resolve this?
I don't, I don't know what there is actually to resolve when something's been already approved.
So let's say that this was approved. What would a county normally do? Would they, this is a quote, though, this is not an invoice, correct?
This is an invoice.
This is an invoice.
Oh, it is an invoice for $15,000?
Because the thing was, is it was approved back in September, but there wasn't an amount, there wasn't an amount attached to it. So the thinking was, we just needed to approve it for the amount that actually came through because it was such a large amount of money.
How could we approve something that we would never have known the amount for? Was it a dollar or was it $10?
That's why it's coming, that's why it's coming to board now.
I'm going to go replay the minutes. I can't believe that I would have brought something in front of the board for approval.
I think there was a, like you said, there was possibly a quote. There was an estimate of what the repairs were going to be.
Well, that's all we can go on.
I understand that. But this is the actual bill. So you can approve it for the actual amount now.
So I take it in September, we did not know the amount, perhaps?
We had a quote, I guess. You said that we had a quote or we did not have a quote?
I can't answer that.
Because normally, we would make a motion, have a not to exceed amount or something, right? Typically.
So I agree, we did have a quote back in September, and this board did a quote, did approve whatever the amount was that we quoted it for. I mean, I, again, I'm, I mean, I'm getting resistance, and nobody seems to remember, but...
So should we just table it until, oh, we can bring it back next month?
Fine with me. I mean, I'll even play that...
You can just approve the $15,000. I mean, it's been, the work's been done, correct?
I don't think so. It says 12 to 14 weeks' delivery.
No, it's been completed.
Oh, it's been done?
The invoice was dated April 13.
Right, but we didn't receive it until July.
This is a very...
So it's, it's in the list of bills.
Oh, because it was billed to Village of Romeo.
Well, the Village of Romeo is the ones that handle the maintenance on our lift station, but we're responsible for the repairs. We have two pumps in that lift station. This is a very critical part. This is the final lift station pump before it goes into wastewater treatment plant. This is where our interceptor dumps into and it's pumped into our, into the wastewater treatment plant. We have two pumps, and one of them, if one of them goes down, then we can actually function on one other pump. But if that pump goes down, then it becomes a very critical situation because we can't have sewer backing up in our system. We limped along on one pump for a long time, but then we had to, now we got both pumps running. One thing that we got to keep in consideration, and this was also the fact that when we did do these pump replacements with our future expanded flows, that these, that one pump is going to be able to handle our future expansion, and we did do the research on that. And it was determined, again, I don't remember the exact amounts per gallons per minute, that we can handle an extremely lot more future flows than what we're currently putting through that lift station right now on one pump. If we ever lose one pump, then the other pump can handle it.
So on, on the front of the invoice, it says, okay to pay.
Well, that's my wording because that's, that work has been done. You know, so that's the invoice I get. I get the invoice, and I, before I give it to Dana, I do what I, you know, need to look at to make sure that the invoice is correct and what we've been, kind of quoted.
So in pragmatic purposes, we don't, Romeo doesn't pay the bill. They give it to us to pay.
Correct.
And we pay the vendor.
This, this, we actually own the piece of property in the Village of Romeo that this lift station on is on. This is our lift station. This is our piece of property. But the Village of Romeo, since they have a DPW, they are the ones that take care of that lift station for us as far as maintenance is concerned. Repairs on something like this, it's got to go out when you have to have a bigger company. I mean, it's down in their ground. It's probably 30 feet underground. They got an elevator. They got to take the pump apart to even get it up in the elevator. And again, I know this was all discussed back in September.
I got to believe, though, that the estimates would have come in after the February, sometime after February of 2022, because that's when we approved the $34,85. So if there's additional charges above and beyond that for the installation, we should have at least received a quote, I would have guessed, sometime between February and when they build in April to at least, you know, I, I'd just like to see the supporting documentation, Mike. I'm not disagreeing that it needs, that it should be paid and the importance of it. I just want to know that we're doing and making sure going forward, we're doing our due diligence and that we're holding the folks accountable for not charging us additional amounts that weren't necessarily approved or provided to us in advance. And I do remember vaguely discussions of additional costs to go with it, but I don't ever recall any conversations. And I'd just like to see the supporting documentation from our primary meetings.
Strangely, it's not itemized with the $34,000.
What's not itemized? I'm sorry.
The amount that we did approve, the $34,000, it's, there isn't a line item, isn't there a place where it says $3,400? If that was our estimate?
So it's a, a quote is a quote, or an estimate's an estimate. I mean, obviously, dealing with the radios or the scanning and the audio/video stuff, you can see it in estimates, an estimate. But when we get real-time figures, sometimes the estimate could be either more or a little bit less. In this situation, it seems to be less, but we do have a quote in which we approve. And that was what was done in 2021. And then why would we approve to have labor on something we didn't even know what the price of the pump was going to be? And we approved that in February of 2022. I'm not, I mean, I'll definitely go and back and dig out these, all these data so you guys all have it in front of you, but, I mean, maybe a little bit, if I would have had maybe more of an idea of what this was all about prior to the meeting, I would have probably provided that information so we wouldn't be doing this right now. So I will, I will work on that, and I'll get you the information that you're asking for. I don't understand myself why it's on, to be honest.
Well, it's just important that we all do our due diligence.
We all do our due diligence? Okay.
That we all do, yes. Because what I'm seeing, what we approved versus the amount, something changed between February and April. I just, I...
There's two items. You approved in February, the price of the pump. In April, I mean, in September, you approved the price of the pump itself. April was, or in February, was the price of the labor to install the pump.
Okay, but even so, if that was the labor, then the total of whatever the pump was, I, I just want to know what the cost of the actual pump was. Did we approve $13,000 in February? I just, that's all I want to see is what, because there's no amount in the minutes stated and to, that's all. It's just a large difference from what, I mean, it's not stated it should be. Should the bill be paid?
So we'll table the item until next, there's not, it's not anything that's pending, everything's been paid?
Hold the bill.
Yeah.
Hold the bill?
Yeah. Well, you paid it, right?
Well, it's with, it hasn't gone out yet. It's with the list of bills. It's in this, it's in this checkbook.
So it's in that deck?
It's in this, yeah.
Nothing gets mailed out until after our board meeting?
Right.
So again, this is an, and this is an item that is a critical area in our infrastructure that we need to have replaced. This work has been performed, and these people are waiting to get paid.
No one's disagreeing with that.
So I think we should pay the bill, you know, before it's too much longer, because, I mean, there could be late charges or...
Find the quote that this is consistent with what we have approved at the prior board meetings. I don't have a problem with that.
So what do they tack on late fee? And we add, say they add $3,000 because we have a discrepancy at this board because we haven't seemed to remember what was going on?
It should take less than a day for either us to look at whatever the original quote was to find that. It should be in...
What if we do this?
Previous board packets.
Who added this to the agenda?
I did.
You did. So I, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I did the research, so...
But I think what you're saying is, this amount wasn't approved in, in according to our, to our meeting minutes. So I think that's a good point. So we shouldn't authorize things to be paid that haven't been approved at this board meeting. But it is in front of us today. I think we have an obligation that if the work is already done, and it's our obligation that we need to pay the bill. That's my position. And maybe a lesson learned is, maybe our minutes should state the amounts, if there is an amount in the minutes to do that. I don't think there's any malicious attempt by the supervisor to do this, in my own opinion.
No, I don't, but I'm not seeing...
But I think there's maybe some procedural thing that can be improved.
She records the motions as we give them to her. So if it was in there, there's no discussion about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really looked. You could have gone in and looked, too. You saw it on the agenda.
I didn't know exactly what the reason it was on the agenda and what, if there was going to be a discrepancy that we weren't paying. As far as I know, that things were going to be paid. Nobody came to me. I mean, this is the first, nobody's even come to me once and asked me for any information. So I got a packet, I got a folder on this whole thing. But if somebody could have just come to me prior to putting it on the agenda, maybe this would have been resolved.
Well, when you're reading through your packet, if you're looking through your packet, you...
There's a couple of other items on here that we, it's, we don't even know, I don't even know what CINTAS. I mean, nobody knows what CINTAS is, but we do with the...
Well, if you look at your packet, it's in your packet.
Right, okay. You know, I'll do the work. I'll get the data. I'll get the information, and I'll, I'll show you.
It shouldn't be that big of a deal. I mean, if we had a quote of that amount, that's all I mean.
It's a big deal when I've got a lot on my plate right now. I mean, I've got so much going on, and go back and take care of something that was...
So let me, let me put it this way. If this wasn't approved, wouldn't we have taken it here to approve? We're talking about after the fact now, right?
Yeah.
The work has already been done. It's already been installed. I think the proper thing to do is to make a motion here to pay it and maybe take, I mean, I, I think what Susan is doing, maybe, maybe she should have had a conversation with you, Mike, beforehand, but I think she's saying that, according to the minutes, and she's the keeper of our records, we did not approve this. So putting it on the agenda is the proper thing to do. So we approve it.
I just want to see all on the same page and all recognize that we each have an equal vote and everything needs to come before us.
Well, in an item at this amount, I mean, our auditors do like to see generally what I'll do with an item this large is I will attach the minutes showing the amount that was approved, because we will have to capitalize this as well. So we need verification that the board approved that purchase. So it is beneficial all the way around if the amount is included in the minutes. Now that we have an actual invoice, I think we could just approve that. There was no quote in the meeting pack, in the board packet for when we approved this in February?
Because if we don't find it in the minutes, this is still unpaid.
Yeah.
And not approved.
Yeah, well, did, did, did you look in the board packet to see if there was a quote included in the board packet or?
We didn't do that. We just searched the minutes and tried to find a number.
So you didn't even look at the board packet from back in...
No, because it wasn't in a motion. It has to be in a motion.
Exactly.
What's that?
It has to be in the motion, the amount that's approved.
But you wouldn't even look in the board packet to see if there was a quote in the board packet?
No, we looked at the motions.
Well, even still, I don't think it would have been for the $15,000.
I think it was $21,000. I think we caught a break by having saved $16,000, but I don't remember. It's going back, but I know that we did approve it, that's all. And then we did come back and approve the labor for the installation, the pump that we did approve to pay for, so...
I don't think anybody's questioning it. I think it's just a matter of housekeeping.
And nobody's questioning it, why is it on the agenda? I mean, it's saying...
Well, because I think it needs to be reflected in the minutes that the board approved $15,709.
I agree that it's, all should be transparent on our...
Whether it's less or more than what was approved before, I think this amount needs to be recorded. I think that was the point of it. You made a good point, Mike. If the work has been done, it should be paid. We shouldn't hold, we shouldn't hold a contractor...
So here's what I, how about I throw a motion out there? You guys can decide what to do with it.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for the new pump and installation as...
Two invoices.
As presented, two, I think it's just one, it's just two pages, right?
Yeah, one's the pump and one's the installation. Oh, yeah, okay.
The, the invoice to Kerr Pump and Supply for $15,709 with an additional stipulation that at the next meeting, that research is done to see if this was previously approved so we don't fall into this trap again. So at the next meeting, if someone brings back that it was previously approved, you know, the minutes don't reflect it, but perhaps there was something in the packet that might imply that it was approved.
I mean, shame on all of us that we approved something back in September 2021 or whatever it was, according to our minutes that we have here in front of us without even knowing what the cost is. I mean, excuse me to say it, but I mean, how could we even approve?
Point well taken.
Yeah, and that's why we're trying to make sure it's not going forward. We're not doing that.
But it was a quote, and specifically just that, it was a quote that we approved.
Right.
It's not the invoice, because we don't get invoice until after it's done. And this is not the first time, I know I've had these things that have been added to the agenda, and I don't know what the point is, but they got to come to it. Second.
Thank you.
Second by Frank. Can we get a roll call, Dana, please?
Crafty?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yeah.
Yes.
Moving on, item... Be unfinished business for the Menko Timbers.[1622.68] It'd be unfinished business for the Menko Timbers. I think we're all familiar with what's going on with that. We did have a meeting last month. Yeah, if I look at the minutes, I might be able to get that wording on very quick. So the motion last month, um, under new business for Menko's property, second amendment to the consent judgment was a motion by Tremblay supported by DeGiorgio to table the second amendment to the Menko Properties consent judgment and have the developer come back with alternatives preventing adverse impacts to water supplies to adjacent wells. We have John Edie here. He's, um, the representative for, um, Menz, uh, Menko Timbers. John has done some work. I did provide you guys with some new, some new wording that he did, um, provide, um, to the consented judgment. I did give it to Bob Seifert to look at and I also at the same time, this is in regards to, uh, our neighboring communities, which is Greenland subdivision. I even took it over to one of the residents over there, which he's in the, uh, audience also right now, which Tom Kalkovin spoke at our last meeting. John, if you want to go ahead and, you know, give us kind of a highlight on what the changes were from last month till now?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you, trustees, for, for your time this afternoon, this evening. When I was here last month, it was a request without, uh, other options presented, challenged, uh, with my client back to the drawing board and come up with some, uh, different alternatives to the, um, required bond that we had trouble finding, uh, a product that would fit the consent judgment. Did some considerable work on this and we came up with a couple of different points, um, of emphasis to help prevent or do the best we can to prevent the surrounding communities' access to water since they will be sharing an aquifer. First two are, are things that we're going to do anyway, but we're going to codify them in, propose to codify them in the consent judgment. One is, um, on the, uh, Timbers property to restrict, um, any well pump capacities to 15 gallons per minute. That's a request or a recommendation of Macomb County Health Department. We're going to incorporate, we would propose to incorporate that into the consent judgment. Would also be incorporated into the master deed or, or bylaws. I've got to take a look and see which section that would be appropriate. We'd also codify in the consent judgment, uh, that would conform with all regulations and requirements of the Macomb County Health Department concerning, um, water wells. That is something that, that would probably be, that would be in the master deed anyway, but we want to put that in the judgment just to confirm that we are, that the residents and the developer would conform with those requirements. And, um, finally, um, of substance, we would, we would do is, uh, by, by statute, a condominium, this is going to be a site condominium development. By statute, a condominium association must, um, escrow 10% of their dues as a reserve fund. What we're going to propose is that we include a second reserve fund, an additional 5% on top of that, um, for the specific purposes of any, uh, legitimate claims that come forward from any surrounding neighbors, neighborhoods, um, that is contiguous with the property to help offset any costs that, that can be directly attributed to, um, the cause of these new wells going in. That would be in place for 10 years. Um, if there are no claims against this fund over the course of 10 years, it would be then turned over to the association. We'd assume at that point that, uh, there is no, um, that subdivision, the new subdivision is not causing any effect or any negative effect on the surrounding properties. There's also additional language that, that the, um, the development will not affect or will take, take efforts not to affect, alter, diminish the water supply of the adjacent properties. Put that in the judgment as well. It's a little more esoteric, but it, it does, um, require the association and the residents not to take any adverse effects other than just drilling a well for their own, uh, water access. So we proposed that. Um, we did work with, um, Mr. Seifert's office to, um, to, uh, fix the language, get language that he is, um, was comfortable with. Spoke with him as, as recently as today, or yesterday, excuse me. And so we have proposed the second amendment to the consent judgment for your consideration. We believe this is the final, um, final step before Mr. Menz can start work out there and get the project started. So if you have any questions, um, any feedback, I appreciate it.
John, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Yeah.
The dues that are going to be paid by the association, what are they anticipated to be?
Don't know. Um, I anticipate, I've worked on the Cloverfield property nearby. Um, those are somewhere in the neighborhood of $600 to $700 a year.
Per resident?
Per resident. Um, it's, it's dependent on cost of snow plowing. Those are the big ones, garbage, um, and, um, maintaining...
Because that's all part of the HOA or whatever that's called for that?
And then the 10% on top of that and then 5% on top of that. So I estimated that the fund would some, keep somewhere between $60,000 and $100,000 over the course of 10 years, maybe somewhere in that neighborhood. That's, that's back of envelope math and certainly don't know, um, what those costs are going to be.
And then, uh, Mr. Supervisor, did you confirm that our attorney did review this and was comfortable with the language?
So this is, uh, this sheet that came back from the attorney with a bunch of redlined items that he, like, Mr. Edie was stating that him and, um, Bob had been working back and forth. This is the redlined items, um, Bob would like to have seen changed, and then this is the completed document.
We don't have a copy of what was redlined versus what was...
I did not put it in the copy there.
So we don't know what the attorney recommended and then what was changed?
It was basically, what it does is it just kind of shortened the version, I think.
Yep, Mr. Supervisor, I have, I have the redlined version if you want to take a look at it. I actually brought the wrong my aspect today, so...
Yeah, if I could just take a quick, get it.
Approach it.
Thank you.
I will say one thing, that the additional funding of the, the 5% of the association dues was 2% at one time, wasn't it, John?
I believe it's 2.5% is the original request, yeah.
2.5% and, and dealing with one of the resident homeowner that lives close by, it was one of the stipulations. We did try to raise that up. It was a concern, uh, for them. We did increase that from 2.5% to 5%.
So a lot of it was preamble type stuff that was deleted, right?
That's right. Bob said, "Take that stuff out of there." It had so many words.
That was probably a nicer way.
It's a cleaner read.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm satisfied that the attorney's comments were handled. Thank you, John.
Additionally, I mean, we do have documentation from the Macomb County Health Department that was done on 3/14 of 2022 to the test wells that were dug out there. If I'm not mistaken, there are two or is there three test wells currently on the property?
Uh, my recollection was three.
Three test wells. And I heard a number that there's a possibility they were getting 120 gallons per minute flow out of those wells?
Yeah, flow was not an issue.
So we have drawdowns. We got pumping rates at what, um, for what long, uh, what length period of time, the drawdown and the recovery on your sheet that you see in front of you from the Macomb County Health Department? As far as I'm concerned, I mean, anybody that, anybody that lives in a well, they would love to have 120 gallons per minute as far as a, a source of water. Sounds like a pretty healthy aquifer to me. I know we have subdivisions in our, um, community that they can't even get five gallons per minute out of them. Not too far from where you guys are developing right now up in Pine Creek. And they do have a community there and they're on two acre parcels and they're putting in the subdivisions. So I feel pretty confident that what we have here in front of us, I mean, there's nobody's going to give 100% guarantee that if they put a development in, it's not going to dry up the aquifer. There's nobody, there's, nobody in the world is going to be able to guarantee that at all. There's no way of known. There's no geological studies that's going to state that. And I don't think you're going to get a guarantee or any insurance out of anybody to do so. Bob Seifert did mention that if it wasn't, this was not part of the original consent judgment, that we really don't have a leg to stand on, that this water issue is something that the Macomb County Health Department would be solely responsible for handling. We wouldn't have any say-so over it all. And finally, we did put a cap and limitations on the pumping capabilities on those pumps out there at a maximum of 15 gallons per minute on the pump size. So we won't allow anything over a 15 gallon per minute pump down in a well case.
So I did do a lot of work on this. I'm not an aqua engineer or whatever that would term would be, um, so please don't take this as, as science or gospel. What, what appears is this is the complete draining of aquifers is, is rare, if not, doesn't happen in Michigan. We just have too much water here. Um, we've got snowfall, we've got lakes, we've got underground river. We've got all kinds of, plenty of, of water. If, if aquifer does start to suffer, if it does go down a bit, what happens, what the remedy is, are stronger pumps, deeper wells, and not, you know, not catastrophes, but a few thousand dollars here, $5,000 there, and that's what this reserve fund is there to, to help if, if necessary.
So the main concern was the neighboring residents and one of the residences here that kind of is the spokesperson for the neighboring community. I don't know if you guys wanted to hear his comments on it at all. I mean, he'd be willing, I'm thinking, to possibly, he did speak at the last meeting. Tom, did you want to say anything? This is our concern, is our residents that live in adjacent neighborhoods and this is who we work for, so, and Tom is representing not all the people in Greenland, but the majority of them, I think.
Tom Kalkovin. Greenland subdivision. I was given the, uh, draft of the second amendment. I did take it back, had some comments, submitted them to Mr. Philbrook. He passed them on and all of the requests that we made were included in the final document. So, uh, at, at this point, I think anything that's reasonably to be done has been done. And I would just like to add that, uh, we all appreciate, uh, Mr. Philbrook and the board giving us the opportunity to provide input in Mr. Edie and Mr. Menz for considering it and, uh, including, uh, our comments.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So at this, at this time, does anybody have any other questions for either parties at all?
No questions.
So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the consent judgment as a pen, uh, the mem, um, first amendment to the consent judgment.
This is a second amendment, Mike.
The second, uh, amendment to the consent judgment of Menko Properties Incorporated.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Tremblay. Is there any other discussion?
I think it's a reasonable compromise given where we were at.
Been going on a long time, so, and we do appreciate everything that Mr. Edie and Mr. Menz has been doing.
Yeah, thank you, John.
So thank you very much for accommodating. So there's no other further discussion. Dana, can we get a roll call, please?
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention, Mike. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Great, great job on coming up with creative solution and listen to the...
Okay, well, moving on to item seven C, unfinished business would be regarding the Parks and Rec. Again, I'm going to look at the minutes really quick. Mike, I know this is your issue, but let me just read the... So at our last meeting in July 20th of 2022, we did have this item in front of us. I'm sure everybody's familiar with what's been going on with the Parks and Rec. There was a motion, it was put on the floor originally. And the motion stated it, it was a motion by Tremblay to approve the agreement with the recommendation that the commission, Commissioner Philbrook bring back the existing commission to revisit to Rome, oh, that's with the check right now. Oh, for the original motion without the word Romeo on the, um, the title, is that what it would be, document? Without, that was the original motion came before.
No, the real commission was for the commission to revisit the word Romeo and revisit the checks on the responsibilities, and that died for lack of support.
Right, without the word Romeo being on the document.
Right, correct. And it, we would revisit it as a commission.
The second motion by DeGiorgio, supported by Tremblay, was to accept agreement under the condition Romeo's added to Washington Bruce Parks and Rec as the title in paragraph one on page two and to state Romeo, Washington Bruce Parks and Rec in paragraph 12. To also have Commissioner Philbrook take it back to the commission, um, the check signing issue. So because of that, Washington approved it without the name Romeo, um, on the title. So after our approval, it had to go back to Wash, had to go back to Washington's board to accept the, the word Romeo in the title. So we did go back to, uh, Washington's board. They did accept the name Romeo, but they wanted it to be stated, uh, Washington Romeo, or Washington Bruce Romeo Parks and Rec. The motion was, um, approved and supported at a five to two vote, I think it was. So now it's back in front of us to, um, I mean, to go ahead and, I guess we would make a motion to accept the title or the name being, uh, Washington Bruce Parks and, Washington Bruce Romeo Parks and Rec. Anything you want to add? I know this is kind of your...
Did you make a motion or, or are you just explaining?
Just explaining.
Okay.
Probably it's too much than what needed to be done, maybe.
I can make a motion if you want.
Sure thing.
I make a motion that we accept the inter-local agreement establishing Washington Bruce and Romeo Parks and Recreation Commission as approved by the Washington, um, Board of Trustees and that we approve it and authorize our clerk and supervisor to sign it and get it notarized and complete it.
Let me just approve the current agreement we have as, as presented. This is our current, our new agreement, right?
Yes, as presented and approved, yeah. It's already signed by Washington. All it requires is a signature from, from us and a, and a notary. So that's my motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lisa. Do we have any other discussion? I just want to say thanks, Mike. Appreciate everything you and...
I, I do want, I do want to make a discussion here just to make sure that I, I inform all of our board members what, what this means. Um, one thing that Mike left out of at the Washington meeting is they did propose the name Romeo, Washington Bruce. That was rejected by the board.
Five to two.
It, no, it was rejected by the board four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three. It was proved nicely in Babinski who said yes and the other four said no. So that motion failed. The new motion was brought, and I want to, I want to say that I did ask Gary to take this back to the board and add the word Romeo. And I left it up to them. And he explained to me what he was going to do and I was okay with it, and here's why. When these bylaws were first signed in 1986, Washington was considered a Berg Romeo. Population was a lot less. Washington was a much smaller community. Today, Washington's population is nearly nine times the size of the village of Romeo. It's three times the size of Bruce. They provide 75% of the funds to operate Parks and Rec. Without Washington as part of Parks and Rec and just Bruce alone, we would be lucky to maintain our parks. So Washington requesting that their name be first and, and proposing that this name of the commission, I think is fair. If you were in any type of business and you were the biggest contributor to the business or had the highest, uh, percentage of ownership, your name would be first. So I think it's fair. Now here's the impact, um, of, of our vote today. If we vote yes, we are voting to continue to do Parks and Rec the way we do today with the new bylaws in place. If we vote no, in essence, we're saying that we don't want Parks and Rec because Washington has already turned down the other name. And, and Washington has already indicated that because the other articles, as opinionated by their own attorney and by our attorney, that there's not a recognized legal entity according to Michigan statute, that they would not continue because of the risk. So a vote yes says, yes, we agree to continue Parks and Rec the way it's funded today under a new set of bylaws, recognizing an entity that's recognized under Michigan statute. A vote no, in essence, is we don't, we don't want to continue Parks and Rec the way we do it. That's the impact of the vote today. So I made my motion. You seconded. I just want that discussion on the table so people all understand what the impact of the vote is.
Yeah, I understand. And I understand your concept about a business with the first name first, but we're not a business. We work for the people in this, in all three communities and, um, the people in the community have spoken. Ninety, all the meetings that I've been to, 98% of the people that have come to that podium have all expressed that they didn't want nothing changed and none included the name. To me, it's all childish games, so that's all I wanted to say. It doesn't matter whose name is first and all that. So we all work for the people. And the people have expressed their views and their point. That's my, that's my two cents or whatever it's worth.
Yeah.
Kind of the wording, none of the la, no labeling, no, um, uh, none of the logos, nothing's going to change. It's all going to stay the same, correct?
This document doesn't change any of that.
Right. The rest of it's going to stay currently the way it is.
Currently, nothing changes.
It's just a document.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Thanks, Frank. Um, do we have any other discussion? Can we get a roll call Dana, please?
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. Moving on.
Can I just make a statement? And I know it's been said before and there was a lot of conversation at last month's meeting that I was unfortunately unable to attend due to unforeseen circumstances. But Mike, I just wanted to personally thank you and Gary Kopp for the amount of time and effort that you put into this, um, and finally making it, um, you know, something that all of the townships, um, can agree to. And with Romeo especially being included, that was something that was very important to, um, the residents and the community. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Item 7A would be deficit elimination plan. I didn't, I didn't add it, but I think that was put together by Rhonda. I did discuss this with Rhonda. I, is this...
Make a motion to approve the plan as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Susan, supported by Frank. Is there any discussion?
I, I do have a question. On page three, the water fund. There's a huge leap in rate revenue between 23, between 22 and 23, and a much huger le, leap in 23 to 24. I'd like to know what the assumptions are to, to get to those points.
Something that may be based on our more users coming on board.
Does that anticipate the rate increase that we voted on?
You have to understand that this is going to go physical year. Okay, the reason for that is this, our physical year of 2023 is half over.
Yeah.
So it's actually more, probably more than half over, if I'm not mistaken, if we add the months up. By the time our new rate fees go into effect and by the time it starts showing, um, a positive result, um, that's where the number, the lower number comes in. When we have a full 12 months of a, of a rate increase, it's going to show a lot more of a physical return. I mean, a lot more of a, um, a rate revenue increase or a...
But what's miss, what's missing here is it doesn't explain how we got to that point. I'm just wondering, as part of deficit elimination plan, wouldn't the people who received... I'm just wondering, as part of deficit elimination plan, wouldn't the people who received this want to know how you're getting to that point? I would ask that question.
So this is based on our new fee schedules, which you're familiar with our new fee schedules, which I think you got a copy of that in our packet too, that was discussed before. So this is based on our new fee schedules, and this is projected futures, and this is something that we needed to put together for the state of Michigan. So Rhonda.
And this is how they, this is how they asked for it.
So yeah, Rhonda did a lot of work, I will give her all the credit for this. I mean, she based this on our, on the revenues and increases that we already approved, that we've already talked about in the past. Again, I mean, this is speculation, and hopefully it works out, because you can see that we're going to be, you know, in pretty good shape. Yeah, it's our goal. So we had a motion by Susan, second by Frank. Is there any other discussion? Roll call Dana, please.
Crafty?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Tremblee?
Yes.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item seven B, new business, the renewal of township insurance. And we have Dustin here from Decker Insurance. Susan, did you want to take this one?
Thank you for having me. First, I just want to simply by saying, this year's actually been a, a real pleasure. I've had probably the most communication I've had in the last five or six years with Bruce, and I just want you to let it all appreciate of I am. All the staff in the office, as well as your department heads and you all of the elected officials has really helped assisting you guys. As I've said plenty of times, insurance is reactionary dollars to problems that have already surfaced. I think that everybody has taken a really great approach to looking at liability, looking at what is in front of us and, and what could take place in the ramifications. So I want to say I appreciate that. The department heads have also been great to work with in terms of just giving us heads up and letting us know what's going on so we can assist. One of the recent projects that, that came to fruition was the mini pumper coming on board, which, you know, it seemed like a really great opportunity. Right now, to tell you the truth, getting rigs is just bona fide difficult. Builds, anything that you're, you're looking to get is just taking, you know, almost getting on three years now. So when you guys have the opportunity, I think it's really great. I know that you guys set up plans last year, and two of those vehicles also came to fruition during the year. So again, all of those things were great, you know, to service the community. So I just want to say I appreciate, you know, being able to work with you guys. I'm going to give you a brief synopsis. I'm not going to talk your heads off, it's insurance, not too many people enjoy it as much as I do. So right up front, you are provided five million dollars in liability coverage as it goes towards general liability, wrongful acts, automobile, and then anything else that should arise that we need to cover. Automobile, obviously, you know, if we hit a building, for example, if we're coming out of Romeo, we happen to smack a building because somebody pushed us into it, right? That would be a situation where we'd afford a liability to. We are covering all of the fire vehicles at replacement cost. That replacement cost as it stands today is roughly about three point three million dollars in replacement costs towards your emergency vehicles. You, you will see an increase on the invoice. The majority of that is, is the vehicle updates that we took on this year. So we had the Explorer and the F-150 come on board, as well as the mini pumper. So that's where you're seeing the majority of the increase, because we were just obviously increasing, increasing our infrastructure. The MCC fees on those are a little bit higher, not, not crazy, just a little bit more because there are newer vehicles. We are supplying a blanket of eight point three million dollars when it comes to the buildings. Each building is individually rated. A blanket is provided to you, which is a combination of your building and your contents. You have a list of those buildings and contents in the very last page of your packet, and it will show the individual limits you have per building and contents per building. Here's who you can mind, the umbrella is, and not the umbrella, but the blanket is there to assist you guys in the event that, you know, we have a total loss and we need to update to ADA compliance, any ordinances, local or internal, and any reconstruction that we may have to do. Always keep in mind when you're thinking about buildings, okay? The one thing that we are beneficial from is that we are not sitting on old buildings that are right up on the road. A lot of times we'll get hamstrung with space when we're too close because of setbacks. At the same time, the buildings are obviously in a newer construction, so we have better ADA compliance currently in place. We also ensure all of the, these small items, lawn mowers, you know, ladders, hoses, turnout gear, voting equipment, all of those things. We also cover your technology, so if we need to replace any old phones, laptops, computers, servers, screens, that device that young man is sitting on right now, things like that, those are all things that we will take care of. And again, having the communication that I've had with you guys, it really helps certify things or solidify things for the future so that there's no surprises. Finally, we have broad form crime coverage, and then we have also your performance bonds. So that is one, we break it up for presentation purposes, but basically what it is, is, you know, we use your, your crime coverage if we know the culprit in an embezzlement situation. We use the bonds if we do not know who the culprit is. We did have to utilize the bonds a couple of years ago for what I believe to arrive as a technology accounting area and a fine that we took care of at the state. So situations happen, so we just make sure you're taken care of. Finally, you know, like you said, we are dealing with a couple of claims. There's a line item I saw on the bottom of the meeting minutes that you guys will be taking care of. So we're also chugging through some claims that were pre this board. I will say knock on wood, you know, since, since the new regime has come in, everything has been a lot smoother and things have been going quite well. And so, you know, from our standpoint, we're very appreciative of that, because I know that can get quite complicated. And that, that's pretty much you all in a nutshell. We didn't have any major updates outside of the vehicles, so no large building increases. We did not go ahead and add any buildings. The last thing I would like to point out to you guys is you should have received a dividend check in May. Frank, did you see that across your desk?
Yeah, but Bob took care of it, so I don't remember what it was.
Nope, that's fine.
Yeah, we did get something, I did.
Yeah, it's, it's, so what that is, that's a dividend check, okay? As a part of the program, every year you receive money back from the premium for performance, for the book, and for yourself. It's based on a five-year loss run, and so, you know, every, every May you will get shipped that check. The final thing, I want to, well, two final things. You do have access to grants. We have a grant program that is specifically dedicated to you all. There is a fall and a spring cycle, okay? There's a host of things that we could go for that, that can reduce a claim or a lawsuit. And that's really what I want to point out to you guys is, you know, for example, I gotta, you know, I'm, not to toot horn here, but our agency has the most submissions and they have the most awarded. And the reason we have that success is because I will needle in and get nosy and help. I do not guarantee, but I definitely get the scales. And that's my job, right? But one thing I want to point out is, is we had a series of vandalism issues on a rural community restroom. It was a twenty thousand dollar restroom, and in the last two years I paid out almost, you know, fifteen thousand dollars in claims. So we put a surveillance system in there, we put signage in there as a part of the grant program, and lo and behold, I have not had one problem since. Parking bollards, there's training for the fire department, so if we want to do fire officer one, two, or three, all of these things would be available to you. I also like pushing the limit. And what I mean by that is, is finding things that maybe people would think is general maintenance. I would love to work with you guys to get you this money. I want to give you ten grand every year. That's, that's my goal. We can do fall and spring, and I want to just push it every time. I want to see Bruce on my Excel spreadsheet every time, whether it's approved or denied. So I definitely want to help you guys out with that. The last thing I want to leave you with, in your packet, you have HR Muni. HR Muni is a free service to you. HR Muni is, is a great new program. It runs, it runs almost like in parallel with like MTA, you know, you guys probably utilize MTA. So you can use that in parallel, but what's nice about it is you can load up all of your personnel, selected officials down to a firefighter training, and you can email training seminars to them so that they can, you know, learn about harassment, cyber, any training that HR Muni wants to put out for you. It will store it away in this system, and you will have it in personnel files ready to go. Now I will say this, your attorney is no slouch. I have a very deep respect for Bob. He is a godfather when it comes to Parkland. He has been there since day one, and anything he says, I would follow right behind. So, you know, you are, you are blessed to have him, and so HR Muni usually assists when you don't have that avenue. You guys do. So again, not that this should take over anything, but it's just another assistance that you can utilize, you know, maybe before, you have to call Bob or something like that. But I will always will say I have a deep respect for Bob and his opinion, and, you know, typically I will follow right behind whatever he says, so. Is there any questions for me or anything in general?
Sure, Mike's got a couple, you want to start, Mike?
All I wanted to say was, the two things that just really perked me up were the risk reduction grant program. We definitely, I mean, it's been conversations that we've had, we need to look into that, and so I'm asking you to please get on us about that, because we really do need to take action. And the second is the human resources risk management services. Those are two great resources that I think we need to really take advantage of.
And you have, you have, we have about four weeks, and the fall is going to open up, so it's a little tight for you all, but if we start planning now and we miss it, we will definitely put something together for spring.
Okay. Thank you Dustin.
Yes ma'am. Sir?
I, I understand our coverage has changed a little bit because of the vehicle mix and and updates.
Not a vehicle mix, you added vehicles. You, you know, you, you added to your fleet.
Okay.
So, you know, the, the increase, you know, unfortunately comes with the vehicles, you know, we're providing coverage to it. Now, to speak to the mini pumper, for example, so the mini pumper, it's my understanding that it was donated to us.
I don't think anybody, I don't see, some of the board members aren't familiar with the mini pumper at all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I apologize, I didn't mention that the chief is out, excuse this evening, because he's on a emergency management meeting with McComb County, a Zoom meeting that we were both supposed to attend, so he's, he's out for that, so. I mean, you can go ahead, but I can explain them, you know.
Couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by the chief, I guess this is a, a long, ongoing project with, with, you know, one of the big three, a, a project that sounded ungodly to, to get what is an aged mini pumper. A mini pumper is typically built on a four fifty or five fifty chassis. This one happens to be, you know, twenty-plus years old, but it's almost brand new, because it was just used at the testing grounds. You're getting it donated, which is fantastic, great cost savings, and the only thing is we have to insure it for you. And the thing that, that we always present to you is, is, you know, well, how do you want to insure it? Now, because you have no investment in it, because it was donated, at this point, we want to look at it and, okay, do we want to provide a replacement dollar for a brand-new mini pumper? Or do we want to give a dollar amount that, that seems, I guess to say, worth your while if we lose the mini pumper? And that was something that, that Dave, you know, I, I don't know who he took it to, I'll be fair with you, but I'm, I, I feel very comfortable, it's a hundred fifty thousand that we had put on this vehicle. Now, I'll be fair with you, it's about four hundred thousand dollars less than a brand-new mini pumper, but again, we're adding to your, he was adding to the arsenal, so there's, there's plenty of backups. And then we got the Explorer, and then we picked up the F-150, which were all items that I remember we had discussed as I was standing here about a year ago. So you guys were walking, you know, forward, and again, just putting those on. You don't see those during the year. We do not charge you during the year for an endorsement typically. We, we call it a leap, where we just, we put it on the following year. It's, it's a, the thing we like to do is not to overcharge, I guess they say, so we're providing the coverage, and we're just not asking for money until that renewal comes up, so.
Didn't we replace two vehicles? So we eliminated two vehicles, at the same time we brought two vehicles on.
Correct, but the vehicles that you eliminated and the vehicles that you brought on are unfortunately, you know, like I said, it's not, each vehicle was right around fifteen hundred apiece. So, you know, as you said, brand new versus aged, not to mention the MCC fees that follow it, that the state provides, the state passes through us.
So what's, what is our existing premium, what is our new premium?
Existing premium is, existing, existing or expiring was right around fifty-two, and renewal is fifty-six sixteen.
Fifty-six thousand one sixty?
Yes, sir.
Per year?
Yes, sir.
Do we know the impact of the budget, did we budget this, add an increase? I mean, to me, it's not a terrible.
Having a budget in front of me, I think that a four thousand dollar increase is probably budgeted for.
Okay.
Because we have added, like you were stating, and we have other items we've added to the policy.
Yeah, it's, our, I mean, I guess, trying to break this out, question wise, sir, because I feel like this is the next one that's going to come, which is fine if you don't, I wasn't trying to.
No, don't anticipate, because you might be wrong.
The, our, I guess, our side of, of the insurance is right around a thousand dollars. So we did do, we did do about a one percent building increase on all of the buildings, and then there's the cost of doing business. So, you know, inflation is about a kick in the middle, and this is what we're starting to see. So, like you said, typically if we didn't have the, these types of changes, it would have been quite flat.
And how much was our dividend this year?
Ooh, you know, they don't share that number with me sometimes, so I don't know.
Okay, so we don't know what it is?
I do apologize for that. I, I would venture to guess, just looking at your premium, it's got to be right around a thousand plus.
Okay. And what line item under our liability coverage covers seven J on our agenda today?
Seven J? Wrongful errors and omissions, sir. Public officials.
Where's that at?
That would be paid.
Public officials?
Right on the general liability, sir. So I guess, just to help you guys out with that, so as you sit here as a board, as you make decisions, as you're planning commission, you're zoning, your ZBA, anybody with authority that is making decisions, I mean, township, the department heads, right? If an adverse effect comes, and I use that, I use that a very broad sweeping term, because it can come in a thousand different ways, that's where typically this coverage is going to come falling under.
That's with the five million dollar liability limit, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, how many grants have we gotten so far in working with you guys?
You?
Bruce Tonsion. Okay, so I'm asking you to help us with that, because that was a big part of your pitch, was the grants that are available, so if you could, I'd ask if you could be proactive with our department heads, that would be appreciated.
I will, I will promise you this, I can be proactive, but I can't handhold either though, sir. I just want to be.
You can't what?
I can't, I can't put guns to heads, because you guys have to write them, you have to go on there.
Understood, understood.
You know what I mean? I will say this.
Our guys may not know what's available, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Have you got all your questions coming to me?
Yes, I did, thank you.
I was expecting a couple of more, sir.
I've got a couple for you Dustin, if you don't mind, please.
Mike's got my others.
I like the question.
What's the, what does the ACV mean for vehicle limit?
So ACV is actual cash value. So when you have a non-emergency vehicle, it is depreciated like any other vehicle that you would have coming off a dealership lot. Now that vehicle, I will say this, that number does need to start at, at the purchase price. Now, it's a little unique with, with townships. I'm, I'm not overly educated on how you guys obtain your vehicles, but for example, my fire departments will go to my gov, they will buy, say, an F, you know, three fifty, four-door, eight-foot bed, okay? Their purchase price might be around thirty-three, the street price might be around forty-five. You know, so there's different things that we need to consider at the time at which we need to get these things. So ACV is, is, you'll always see me asking numbers, you will always see me getting a little nosy, because I want to know specifically, you know, where that investment dollar is. And that includes everything that would be on a vehicle. Anything attached is included in a vehicle price.
Well, I guess we'll lead on to my next question. You said you, you cover replacement cost of the vehicle. Is that prorated per, is that a hundred percent replacement cost, let's say?
It's, it's the dollars that you see on the schedule, and that is adjustable at any point in time with your guys' consideration. The other thing I'd like to add to that is that replacement cost vehicle also has a twenty-five percent additional buy program at the time of loss. So this is something that you don't pay for, but that will be available whenever. So if you total a vehicle, you can buy up to twenty-five percent of that value, okay? So a lot of times when I lose an ambulance, it's usually an E-three fifty. They want to step it up to a four fifty, it costs a little bit more. They pay pennies on the dollars for that twenty-five percent, so it allows you to have a little more buying power. Any one of these numbers can be adjusted, and I'll be very upfront with you, it's been moving around like crazy in the last eight months. So a lot of what I've been employing, you know, my chiefs and, and my, my officers is, is please get with your dealers, get with your vendors, find out. And one more thing I want to point out as you're asking this question, sir, turnout gear. As I stood before you a year ago, high end on turnout gear was twenty-eight hundred dollars. As I stand before you right now, it's between thirty-four and thirty-six. So in one year, you've seen that kind of gain and we're also seeing that on the vehicle side. So it is something to consider. Again, the mini pumper that you guys were able to have donated is half a million dollars straight away.
So I guess just, you, you got down, let's just take for instance, the, our nineteen ninety-two stupid fire truck. You got a, the vehicle limit of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, so that vehicle is totaled, that's exactly.
You are going to be getting two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for which I'd also like to point out here, sir. If, if you look at that truck and I can tell you right now that truck's probably more in the, the mid-fours, I can bring that up to there. We can give you the, we can, we can give you those dollars. That's what's great about replacement. At the same time, though, that comes at, at a premium cost as well. So it's kind of, it's a kind of a balance of, of how, and I will say this. A ve- a fire vehicle, it takes a lot to get them totaled. You know, you'd, you, it's not, it's not like a, you know, forty-five, fifty percent threshold, say, on a, a vehicle. You really got to twist up a, a fire truck. I am currently writing out in the middle of a six hundred thousand dollar repair on a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar truck. So that just goes to show you the threshold that we need to meet these days because they're just so hard to get. So we're, we're, we're going to give you that money, but we can also work and give you projections or increases to, to increase those limits, even on old vehicles, even on a vehicle from nineteen ninety-two, so. But I, 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 the thing I always like to point out, I'm not a doomsday insurance salesman. I do not lose fire trucks a lot. I insure a hundred and ten municipalities. I can't tell you the last time I lost a fire truck. They get dinged up, they get knocked around, but, you know, that's the other thing we have to think about. And this money, this money that you see here as replacement cost, that is a total. On fire, going down a hill, rolling into a lake, sinking to the bottom, so.
Thank you, Dustin. I have no more, no further questions.
Dustin, can you just share a little bit more about the firefighter's accident policy?
Absolutely.
So I, I guess my, my question is this, a lot of it, it just seems like it would be covered through workman's comp. Or there's some additional on top of that may be redundant. Is this something that we're required to have with our union contract? Or no, just additional coverage that we've provided?
So the last bit I can't, I can't answer. First bit, so yes, your interpretation is, is, is correct. It does look like, they run in parallel actually with each other. Now, the one difference with this is, is this kicks in immediately, whereas work comp is a processing of anywhere from seven to ten days. A lot of times, also, this is going to provide benefits for, you know, lump sums for wait, for things that take place like, you know, loss or mobility of an arm. This runs in conjunction in parallel. Something that you need to keep in mind is that you guys use this, it's to my understanding. You guys use this to offset because there are language in policies and procedures that you are paying or covering daily wages. That is my understanding. So the, this coupled with your work comp is how the township would recoup those fees. Now, the thing I do want to point out is this is on duty only. And something I really want to point out here is we did have an incident, not one of our townships, but we lost a firefighter in Monroe Township. It took probably eleven months for everybody to finally determine that he was actually going to a call, okay? To get a copious amount of benefits. Now, here's the thing. He was single. He didn't interrupt dinner. He didn't have anybody there. He had a dog and a cat. He had nothing. So when he went to the car and he died in the driveway, unfortunately, nobody knew if he was going for that call or if he was going to the grocery store because there was a big hour window. So what I've, and, and I've, I've, I've expressed this today to chief, you know, and he totally understands. I mean, before these people get up, you know, they're putting some response on, their permanent marker on the dog, yelling at the kids, waving at the neighbor kid. Because these funds are available only on duty. And I will be very upfront with you. The carrier will fight if I can't show that. And I'd never want to put these funds at risk for one of my firefighters, so. Because I don't work, and I'll always be fair with you, I don't work for these carriers. I work for you. I'm independent. I have no association in them except for the placement of where you go. So I will pull out every dollar I can to put back into the township, so. But it's, it's, it is a great program. It does seem like it runs parallel. I mean, it sounds like it's, it's contradictory, but it actually runs in parallel with work comp. We actually utilized a work comp provident situation prior to this existing board.
Thank you.
And that's why, and, and sorry, not to harp on this, that's why I need to know what's going on. Because I, if we're putting in the work comp, we're also running the provident at the same time for you.
Are we, um, are we looking to make a motion on this because we don't have, uh, I guess, uh, price?
Yeah.
Yeah. Fifty-six, one sixty.
Susan, you should have an invoice from our office manager.
I asked him what the price was. It's fifty-six thousand, one sixty.
I know, but I don't have a price. I'm, I'm sorry, just to be fair, I, there should have been an invoice?
No, it's here.
Yeah, okay.
Fifty-six, one sixty?
Okay.
So that's the amount.
That's, that's the concrete right there. I just wanted to make sure. I'm like, should have been invoicing.
So I'll make a motion to go ahead and renew, um, our decker insurance policy with the increase of.
As presented.
Total, annual cost of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
It wasn't?
No, that wasn't the exact.
Fifty-six, one sixty.
As presented.
One sixteen. Yeah, one sixteen. I think I heard one fifteen, okay.
Amendment to, um, the amount of fifty-six, one sixteen.
One sixty, six zero.
Fifty-six, zero, one, six.
Oh, one six.
I'm sorry. I might have missed it.
So you heard what, uh?
Yeah.
Support.
Support by Frank. Um, any other discussion? Can we get a roll call, please?
Craft?
Yes.
Tremblee?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Dustin. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Please, John, Mike, cell phone and email or write on the cover of those, anything. You guys have any questions, always please reach out. You can reach us 24 hours a day. Can I excuse myself?
Yeah, absolutely. Good night. Careful.
You're not staying for the filets?
Item seven, moving on item seven C, the township twenty-two, two, twenty-two tax rate, L dash four, zero, two, nine. Um, Frank?
Yeah, so this is, uh, the, the millage for December first. For the millage and star township operating Parks and Recs Fire ALS. It's pretty standard every year.
So it shows that our fire and ALS is expired in twenty twenty-two. Does that mean it's?
Did we get something in our packet? I don't know.
Is that beyond the ballot in November?
Is that this?
No, we renewed it for, it's just that this is, so what you're reading is it's for fire, it's two point two four up until twenty-two. And then, and then it'll be up again. I mean, we've already voted on the five percent for fifteen years or ten years or whatever.
Well, it's actually, um, six point three total, right? Between the two of them.
Between the two, right, but we can go up to five each.
Right, yeah, we're, we're, we're down three point seven minutes available.
Right.
But the issue I've got is it says the expiration date of the millage is to twenty twenty-two. That's my concern.
Right.
Well, we put it on the ballot earlier, so we.
So it is on the ballot?
It was. We've already approved it.
What's our current millage?
It's the same.
Two, two, four and three, two, nine? So we're just, we're just voting to renew it?
Continuing, yeah.
And that's with all the others too, right?
See, and this is for the twenty-two, December first, twenty-two tax bill is what it's for.
Okay. We do this every year, right?
Right.
Okay.
Want to make a motion, Frank?
Yeah, make a motion that, uh, the board accepts this, um, L four, zero, two, nine, twenty, twenty-two tax rate request.
I'll support. Any other discussion? Roll call, please?
Crafty?
Yes.
Tremblee?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Thanks, Frank. Moving on, item seven D, the election inspectors pay.
So you have this, um, breakdown of what other communities, um, pay. Give you an idea. We are pretty low. So I written along the side there of Bruce Township, uh, put us some recommendations for increases. Right now, we're at ten dollars an hour approximately. And I think we and New Baltimore are the lowest. Long day, fifteen hours usually.
Oh, that's for training?
Well, some of there's training in here, but these are for the inspectors that actually work the polls.
Apparently you pay two hundred dollars a day for like a precinct chairperson and so on down the line.
Yeah, we, we actually in each precinct have two chairpeople because you have to have a Democrat and a Republican. So that's why I, this isn't, uh, isn't wrong, is wrong about the hundred and fifty for the co-chair because they're both considered co-chair or chairperson. So they each get from two hundred to two twenty-five.
So you're looking to increase the chairperson, the co-chair, and then also the inspector, everything else is going to, or there's a, the ones that you don't have an amount next to, they're going to stay the same? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes. Well, no, because the chair, they're, the AV board is like a precinct too, so it would be the same thing. Two hundred, two, see, see how it says chairperson, chairperson, AV counting board? So they would be two hundred and twenty-five as well for both those chair and co-chair.
So you're saying the same thing for the AV counting board chairperson, the co-chair and inspector?
And the inspector you have lined out. We don't have one, is that why? Third lined out?
Yes, that's right.
So it'd be this other thing too, the one fifty, this would be up too, right?
Right. And for some reason, we didn't have anything in the receiving board, which is, somebody has to stay longer, so we added that.
All the receiving board.
Make a motion. We accept this as presented.
Second.
Motion by Frank, supported by Susan. We don't have total at all. I mean, I, yeah. What, what are we looking at? An increase for the date?
Well, that varies because it depends on the election. Sometimes we have, you can go, go as low as three election workers in a precinct and other times it's seven, so.
There's always a maximum number.
You know, required to stay under a certain.
And how many precincts do we have? Two?
We have four precincts and, and an AV, so I guess you call it five.
Seems like the co-chair usually gets a little bit less. Is there a reason why it's going?
Well, that's just a mistake because we have, we don't call them co-chair. We have chairpeople. We, we have, you have to have Democrat and Republican. We have two chairpeople in each precinct.
So they actually do the same job?
They do.
So my rough estimate is about three or four thousand in election.
I don't have any further, any questions? Anybody else have any discussion?
When was the last increase?
Uh, we went from an hourly wage to that just before we took office, I think. Not since we've been in office.
But they work long hours, right? I mean, they're here like at five in the morning till.
So they're supposed to be here by six, but most of them are here, you know, five thirty.
And they work till like?
Close the polls?
Nine, nine thirty. Even later if we have an issue, so.
What initiated the, you know?
Well, they, it's unusual because most people do this just to help out, you know, it's their civic duty. But we started, people were asking us, are we going to get a raise? Ten dollars an hour is not very much.
People are going to get rich off of this.
That's right. It's hard enough to get election workers.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Tremblee?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Thank you, Susan, for doing it. Item seven E, the SINTAS proposal.
So, uh, this woman came in from SINTAS to talk to Frank and Bob and then came in and spoke with me and, and wanted to, uh, propose, uh, this is, you have the picture in the back there of the rugs. It looks like this after we had called it. It would provide us with, one of these, uh, is a proposal for two of those where our rugs that we have out there are now, they're kind of discolored. And it would come in, I think every two weeks, one or two weeks, they'd come in and, um, clean them, take all the rugs.
Swap them out.
Swap them out, because I was trying to say. But this also includes, um, paper towel, um, so changing that out, providing the, um, the, these are where they, you know, the.
Dispenser?
Dispenser. I want you to take a.
That's all right. So, yeah, they would provide the dispenser, the paper toweling for refill.
Yeah. And there are two different prices. There are two estimates here. One is for the, uh, four rugs and one is for just the two rugs. We have two now. She was talking about having us put a Bruce Township one at this door and this door. And as we head into the.
Winter months.
Yeah.
What do we do today?
Well.
We have the same dirty rug.
Yeah, and.
So we don't spend any money on, on this proposal today?
Other than, uh.
So this is, this proposal is all, is all incremental, is the question? Do we know what the impact is per year?
Well, this time's twelve. And maybe we're not ready for it. I just told her I would present it, so, um.
I mean, I'm all for getting a hands-free soap dispenser, a hands-free paper towel dispenser in the bathroom. I think that we got a pump dispenser.
Do we use our money for this?
I mean, is these, are these rental items?
Non-going though.
Are we going to rent these items or do we own them actually?
No, you pay us a monthly fee.
If we decide that we don't want them anymore, they come and grab all your stuff and leave.
I didn't ask that question. Interesting.
So is it the fifty-one plus the sixty would be the, or are these two separate proposals?
They're two different because one, one involves the four rugs and one is the two rugs. I didn't, I think four rugs was necessary.
So we're going to the fifty-one dollar thing? The first quote?
That's a cheaper one.
Where are we currently buying our, our soaps and, uh, paper towels and that?
Sam's glove or Amazon or one of those.
So if you choose the monthly option, it's one fifty-eight. Is that what it is? Those are three different options?
Four rugs would be one seventy-six.
It's like a twenty-two dollar difference.
I feel it's not even necessary. I don't know.
About two grand a year.
Right now, we have cleaning people who come in and change out the paper towel we buy at.
What's two, yeah, what was two grand a year, Mike?
The, the first proposal, the impact, estimate, rough estimate. That's if you went with the monthly delivery schedule. And so you did it twelve times a year. Are we addressing an issue with this?
No.
No.
She just came soliciting and, uh, you know, the rugs are nice. Ours are suffering a little bit, but it, we could live without it in this climate. I don't know.
I'd rather see two thousand spent on the HR study. To be quite honest with you. But.
Good point.
Might be something down the road worth looking.
Yeah.
I know they have additional services and products available too. Just doing cost analysis to see if it's worth it to consider going forward, but.
So just set it aside for now?
For right now, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for presenting that.
Thanks for doing this, Susan.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to our, um, seven F, item seven F, the utility fee schedule.
So this is just a, a housekeeping thing. The first page is what we agreed to, but the second page is what went to the attorneys. So just to make sure, uh, we are all on the same page. Might want to make a motion to.
So the first page is exactly what's on the second page, but it's just broken down differently. Fifteen dollars.
There were some mistakes too on the first page.
The cubic feet, those are two mistakes, but the, um, but all the fees are exactly the same though as far as the. And I know that there was an issue regarding, um, in our ordinance, it states that we list everything at a thousand cubic feet. But a thousand cubic feet or one cubic foot or a thousand or a million cubic feet, it's all the same price. It's just a different, just different number. It's all the same thing. So it doesn't matter, we listed at a thousand cubic feet on our ordinance, and we charge at one cubic foot on our...
Well, this says a thousand cubic feet, page two, that you sent to the attorneys. So that corresponds with our ordinance?
Well, that's exactly why I sent the attorney like that, but we bill per cubic foot, which is the same thing, it's just the price of cubic feet over a thousand cubic feet. It's just, that's the same, it's the same fee, it's just how the totals are. You know what I'm saying?
No, 'cause our, our ordinance says to bill, we bill, uh, a thousand cubic feet.
I think it says that that's what we charge, that it doesn't say we bill. But a thousand cubic feet is the same thing as, so if a seventy-one dollars per thousand cubic feet, it's the same number as one cubic feet being seven point one cents.
Okay, so what are you saying here?
That nothing, there, it's...
This is fine, wait.
I mean, there's nothing that...
Is that because our ordinance is quoted in thousand cubic feet, is that why?
Yes, yes.
The top item sewer debt to increase, it says basically sixty dollars annually, which is a sixty-dollar increase overall. You know, that's under sixty annually, but it says from one forty-four to two oh four, which is exactly what it, um, that would be the sewer debt to increase.
So do you have a problem with the second page at all?
No, I, I broke the second page down so that Bob Seifert, when he wrote it, it was a lot more in layman's terms, that's why I wrote it that way.
For the attorney, it was layman's terms.
Well, it was simpler for him, it, I broke it down per page on our ordinance. Per page and per item number on ordinance, exactly the number that needed to be changed.
Well, just to make sure we're all on the same page, Rhonda brought this to me, and she was especially concerned.
I know there was two, the two errors on the, on the price, I made a mistake on my adding, but if you looked at it, you can easily see that the adding was wrong on, uh, non-residential sewer and water to increase from, uh, there was an error there. If you had point oh four-three and point oh one-one for the increase, it comes out to point oh five-four, which I had...
So this is what we approved, right, this page? And this is what Mike gave to...
The attorney, yeah.
The attorney, and Rhonda was trying to reconcile?
She just thought that it would be a good idea, since he, this is exactly what the attorney worked off of, that we approve this. So everything is, you know, copasited.
Did Rhonda feel comfortable that this reflected this?
Yes.
Okay.
Rhonda didn't feel comfortable this reflected this?
She did.
No, she did.
But the reason that I made the second page was for Bob, when I sent him the first page. It just made it simpler for him, and probably saved us time with him trying to break it down and figure it out. I just basically said that on page two, on item A, you need to change, item A, residential, to fifteen dollars a month, which I think was currently twelve dollars a month.
Yeah, and I'm sure that was helpful to him, and probably saved us some money.
Right. So, I mean, I, I don't know if we need to really act on this, other than that correction, price per cubic feet.
What's confusing is the first page doesn't have any items listed in page two. The second one has items listed, but I don't know how they relate to the first page.
So your sewer debt is the same way across the board?
Well, I, I just look at the first line, item A, residential, change to fifteen dollars per month. And I don't see anything on the first page that says anything related to fifteen dollars per month, so, I'm, I'm on the first item, I'm...
You're saying the sewer, the sewer debt, is that what you're saying, the first item here, where are you at, Mike?
Page two, uh, the second page, the first item. Ready, ready to serve. I don't know where that fifteen dollars per month is on the first page.
So the second, the second item down, sewer, ready to serve, to increase sixty dollars annually. So if you add up annually, sixty dollars annually and divide it by twelve, it comes out to the, the amount that you would see on the second page. So that's an increase to sixty dollars annually, it went from one twenty to one eighty. And if you divide sixty by twelve, the increase is...
So one eighty divided by twelve is fifteen?
Right.
Okay.
Or it was the increase, but basically it's the same, it's the same fee, but it's just on the increase, you know, compared to what the increase was from last year, it was sixty dollars annually, so. Does that make sense to you, Mike?
Yeah, the first one does.
If you got any other questions, let me know, I know.
Well, I think the board already approved this. So as long as this reflects this, I don't think there's an issue. And I don't know if we wanna take the time to reconcile every item, or... I would say I rely, if Rhonda, if Rhonda feels comfortable as our county manager, then I'm good.
To what, to approve this, since we have...
I don't know if we need to approve it, do we?
Well, that's what she's saying, she brought this to me and said...
The only reason that we would need to approve it would be to, for the two changes in the fees, that was the, in my calculations.
Oh, you mean changes from what we, what was originally approved?
Yeah.
Oh. That makes...
And that was just two addition corrections that were made, if you look at the two circled items on the...
Oh, yeah, 'cause it was off by a decimal.
Yeah. These other items, I think, I mean, we've already approved everything else, we approved everything, and it's just in different terms on the second sheet. Because we have sewer ready to serve, uh, sewer debt fees or sewer ready to serve, but we have a lot of different breakdowns on those fees. One of them is residential, non-residential, mobile, home. You know, we don't have to, we, we, we're increasing sewer debt, but we don't have to list every individual, um, category. Everything, it's just, it, basically, it's a sewer debt that's being increased across the board, that's what we voted to approve. Right? Yeah, hey, go on.
I brought, I brought a water bill so I could follow along with you. Teresa Vito said, covered bridge, so I'm gonna water bill, I pay one fifty-six right now, based on these rates, it's going up to two forty-four.
So you're on a, you're a residential, non-water user?
Right, so I have, I'm on the ready to serve, residential, I'm on the sewer debt, and I'm on the wastewater disposal. 'Cause I only have sewer...
What do you currently pay today?
So the water supply doesn't fly to me, sorry.
What do you currently pay today?
Right now, it's a hundred and fifty-six total with all three of those, and it's gonna go up to two forty-four.
That sounds about right, about an eighty percent increase.
So you're...
Yeah, the sewer?
And you have to break it down annually, but one sixty-four divided by twelve would be...
I, I wrote, yeah, 'cause I wrote it, I, this is by quarter, but then I broke it down by monthly and added it up, and then times it by three, and it came to two forty-four.
It's actually less than eighty percent.
Hold on a second, Teresa, I'll see if I can...
What did you say, it's going up to two forty-four?
Two forty-four point five. And point five came from the, the usage fee, 'cause it's going up nineteen fifty, so that came out to the point five.
Is that a quarterly, um, bill, or is it a, a monthly bill?
Mine's a quarterly bill.
Yeah. So I have eighteen dollars monthly, which would be like sixty bucks quarterly, maybe I'm missing something.
Here's my bill, so that's the quarterly rate, but that will be the monthly rate. So then, when you take the monthly rate and times it by three, it comes to forty-four point five. See, that's gonna be the new, that will be the new monthly.
So did you divide the two oh four by twelve, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. So this right here is going to be, you divide this by, this is the three, this is three months' worth. This is three months' worth, and this is three months' worth at your new rates, which brings it to two forty-four point five. I just wanted to make sure that I'm following what your, what your structure is.
So the sewer debt, the sewer debt to increase, so it's gonna be, it's basically gonna cause you two hundred and four annually. That's what your new fee's gonna be, so if you divide...
On just that one?
But if you divide two oh four by twelve, it's seventeen, and that would be this figure here, which you have fifty-one, and that's for three months.
It is seventeen for three months, correct, this is three months, three months, three months, based on this fee schedule that you're presenting.
Right, so we got seventeen, and the way I figured it, still, even the way I was just adding up, it's came out to the same, so sewer ready to serve is one eighty divided by twelve. I'm just not doubting you, I just wanna check it, okay? It's fifteen. Forty-five.
And I took that off of the schedule here. The type-rough one that you presented to whoever it was, the attorney.
Is your computer on or something in your office?
I don't have anything in there, somebody's got something in there I don't know about. Is there something there I'm not familiar with?
Oh, it's the camera.
And the SU is a sewer use, or is...
It's, the codes are on the bottom of the bill. I mean, I knew we were getting an increase, I didn't think it was that major of an increase. And we haven't had an increase, so I understand that.
Seventy dollars a quarter, Teresa, maybe I'm, I don't know, seventy dollars, three. Two hundred and ten dollars a quarter, probably you got some other fees on there, that makes it two forty-four. Two hundred, so your bill here is one seventy-one.
If that's with the late fee, it's a hundred and fifty-six.
You don't pay your bill late.
I don't pay it late.
Oh, it's there. It's just there, it's always there, so this right here is the amount she owes.
You wanna pay it late.
So I got, it shows one fifty-six, and your new bill's gonna be like, according to what I came up with, like two-ten, let's just say it's, and that's a quarter, so let's say it's two fifty, it's a hundred dollar increase.
Okay, 'cause I don't see how you came up with those fees, 'cause I took them right off of this page, and that's the numbers that it comes out to.
What I could do is I can, I can meet with you, Teresa, I can go over them all, but it's, it just...
Can you do that after the meeting, you don't have to do it right now?
Yeah, absolutely, but I mean, you've got it figured out here, forty-five, fifty-one, and...
Do I not have that added right in there?
I think maybe you're a hundred and forty-eight, your, your annual on your sewer usage should be four sixty-four divided by...
Nope, you got it right, it's two forty-four.
Two forty-four, yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
It's a fifty-six percent increase from what you currently pay. I'm in the same boat as you.
So what's the increase total then, Mike, is it a hundred?
Uh, the increase per quarter is eighty-eight dollars. I just did the same math that Teresa did, and it worked out the same number, so I'm sure you did it right. Or we both did it wrong.
It's not bad, I mean, that...
Okay.
It's not bad of any, I mean, if it's a hundred dollars a, a quarter, it comes out to thirty-nine dollars a month.
So are we comfortable with this, the way it is? So we'll leave it the way it is?
I mean, if you studied a little bit, and you look at it, and you can understand it, I think it makes a lot more sense. But it's, looks complicated.
I think there's a change, though, from what was approved, that's, that's the issue.
It's not changed.
Well, there are...
What was, so what was written here is the same, are you saying there was mistakes, or...
Well, the changes in the air on the calculations for the cubic feet, that would be the only change.
But your claim is that what was approved is what's written here in, in pen, pencil?
But Rhonda's, these are Rhonda's corrections, and I think there was a mistake, uh, uh, the numbers were flipped here on the one, and and this is correction down below, so...
So the last two items on the first page is non-residential sewer and water to increase by point oh one-one cubic feet. So if you take that from what our original number was, was point oh four-three-five-eight, and add point oh one-one on there, it comes out to point oh five-four-five-eight, when I did my original calculations on this, I had point oh four-five-eight, which the board did approve. So the only thing that we would need to approve would be the two numbers on the, my addition that I had there for some reason was wrong.
So it's, it's really approving the addition errors versus the actual increase that was approved?
So all these prices are exactly the same as they are on here, they're just different...
Different formula.
Formula.
Right, the, the second page says by a thousand cubic foot.
Right.
The other one was a hundred, or one cubic foot.
But our ordinance has a thousand cubic feet, which is why I think we should go with the second one.
It's the same thing.
It's just where you put the decimal, thousand versus one.
Our bills that we charge is your bill, oh, you don't have a water bill?
I don't have a water bill.
Our bills are charged at a cubic foot. But a thousand cubic feet, it's seventy-one dollars, is the same thing as seven cents, seven cubic foot.
Point seven one, right?
Right, point oh seven, right, it's, it's simple once you see the formula accuracy. I mean, if it makes you feel better to re, to approve something that we already approved, I'm fine with that.
I don't see there's a need to. I think the only thing is, is, is just make sure that...
The thing that Rhonda was concerned about...
Rhonda, if Rhonda's okay with this.
This is her handwriting here.
Yeah, because what, the, these are wrong, but the increases are correct. Right?
The other thing we done that, when we discussed this, was we talked about a committee for the water study. We never did anything about it.
With what?
When we passed that, those increases, we, you asked for a committee to be...
Yeah, thirty days after, that would have been...
God, our increases haven't even had the book yet.
The, the motion for the committee was thirty days after that meeting, which would have been July, mid-July. So we're already at sixty days, and that committee hasn't been formed. Wasn't my responsibility to put it together.
Well, whose was it?
The supervisors or someone in, in the administration.
It wasn't my suggestion, it was Mike's suggestion to me, and he wanted me to do something, and I have not put a committee together.
The motion was to form a committee, and there was specific, in fact, I have it here somewhere.
The committee was basically to do a study, and if you obviously look back at what we originally talked about at the beginning of the meeting with our rate, uh, decrease, you can see the study's been done already.
I can read the motion if you want.
I, I know, but, the, the debt reduction is what the, the committee was gonna be for, to see what these numbers were gonna do for our future, you know, what our future is gonna be, or whatever our numbers are gonna be, and it's right here, so this is already done by your committee. The same things that your committee's gonna do, they're gonna do a little bit of research, they're gonna come up with the, these future projections on our number, and where we're gonna be at in the years, you know, physical year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, all the way up to year twenty-twenty-eight, and that would be, so these numbers are already here, I mean, you know what I'm saying, Mike?
The, the committee has specific items that were pointed out, and it was to form the subcommittee within thirty days of this meeting, which was the June fifteenth meeting, and report back with the following considerations within six months, ten to fifteen-year projection, with assumed costs for water and sewer, investigate writing off some water receivable, to understand where the prior rate study went wrong, and to put in place a metering system to identify over-usage and enforce the ordinance. I think that's the question you're asking, right?
Right.
Because we did pass it, so I'm just...
Yeah, and if we have a motion, and it gets passed, action should be taken.
Well, we have a rate study right here.
So that must be done.
The motion wasn't a rate study, the motion was to form a committee.
I'll be honest with you, I don't have time to sit on a committee, if somebody else wants to sit on a committee, then you can sit on a committee. I'm looking, I'm getting beat up, because I got two decimals, or two fractions wrong on this, on this sheet for all the work that went into it, and...
That wasn't the intent, Mike, I just, we're...
Well, nobody seems to understand it, because it's an easy, simple formula, if you sit down and you figure it out, it's the same formula on this page as on this page, the same formula that's on our ordinances, but nobody wants to sit down and take the time to figure it out. But I think that just now, when people sit down and look at it, it starts making more sense to them.
I'll sit on your committee one.
I assume, I, I assume that you made the motion, you were putting the committee together.
I can read the motion again, if you want me to read it to you.
He asked me to do it, I do recall that, and I did agree to put a committee together. And I do remember it being thirty days, so Mike's correct by saying that.
Motion by Tremblay, support by Philbrook, to form a water sewer committee with the thirty days of this meeting, report back with the following considerations within six months. And there were four considerations.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't, it doesn't say who was responsible for forming the committee, that's my point. It just, you made the motion, I assumed you were gonna work on Philbrook.
Yeah, you don't assume that a trustee's gonna form the committee.
Why not?
Because the administration makes fifteen times what the trustee makes, there's some more obligations and responsibilities there than a trustee.
We got twenty times more of the work, too, that we do around here all the time.
I, um... I'm not gonna argue who should do it, but I'm sure it's not a trustee.
I'm just telling you.
Let's not get into that away.
So...
I, I, since day one, and I don't mean to say it again, I don't wanna sound like a program record, but since day one, I've worked on sewer and water issues. And, I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, I've, I've sat down and probably explained this issue with our sewer and water to a lot of members in our community, a lot of members in our board, I brought all the factual numbers to everybody, with regards to our flow... with regards to our floor, sewer flows and our water flows, and I mean, I just, I'm burnt out on it. I don't want to, Teresa, if you want to jump in, I'll be more happy to share all the information I got with you, too. Like I said, I've been doing this, I don't know what anybody else, you know, I don't know what else to say. You know, I've presented everybody, and I think that's our next item up for discussion, is our possibilities of looking at future, um, wastewater treatment options, so.
Didn't I, I ask one more thing of the board? Um, just for the benefit of people watching, could you please just re-explain what the ready to serve factual means?
So there is a definition, I don't have it in front of me, but it's basically, it pretty much states that if you're, um, on a sewer system, it's basically, it's, it's, uh, I, I don't know, I can go grab my, um, book, and it does have a definition in our, um, fee schedule.
Okay.
You know, if you want.
It's there.
Guys, mine, wait a second. If I can find it right away.
Ready to serve charges cover a portion of the cost of maintenance, repairs, and upkeep of the pipes to the ground.
Thank you. Basically, it's regards to our, what's basically saying is that it's in regards to our, um, long, any infrastructure repairs, that we have a water main break, that we have a sewer main that collapses, structures, whatever the case might be.
You did say that one before, thank you, Mike, yes.
What about the sewer, um, benefit fee, I got that in front of me, you want to know that one by each, you know?
Only when I'm being charged for.
What else you, what is the second?
I know the rest, it's the sewer usage, the debt reduction, and then the ready to serve.
You know what the debt reduction is in?
I don't know how much it is, but I do know what it's for.
Okay. Okay.
That should be pretty much one million dollars to nothing, though.
Yeah.
Let's get in here.
You can, I, I have, you can take a look at our, way I said, um, deficit elimination here, if you want, Teresa, after the meeting, too.
Okay.
Okay. So regarding our, regarding seven F, I will make a, a motion to go ahead and amend what we approved originally to correct the additions on our non-residential sewer, and also our non-residential sewer and water, I'm sorry, non-residential sewer and water, and also our non-residential water only, to, um, adjust or correct calculations.
Second.
Let me get a roll call Dana, please.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to, um, item seven G, the Cloverfield meters.
I added this because, well, back when, I think it was the beginning of the year, when Fred came in and talked to us about meters, we kind of touched on this. But in our last meeting, we talked about not moving ahead with radio meters until we're sure that what we're doing in industrial area is going to work, but then we got this bill, so I, I don't, I don't.
Okay, so, so we, we did approve to go ahead and have our, all of our meters put on radios. Again, there's a big shortage on meters, there's a big shortage on radios. Fred pre-bought so many meters, so he has them in stock, so that when we do have a building that calls, which is usually at the last minute, and say that they're ready to have their water hooked up, that Fred's got a meter on his shelf. We prepay for those meters pretty much, and then, um, then, um, we don't get billed for them, we just get billed for the installation, which I did discuss this, I think, with you at one point. Um, if you look at these, they're cellular meter registers, these are the radios that go on the outside of the buildings, these are not actually meters. These are the radios, which is highlighted in parentheses in there. So even though that we stated that we're going to wait because there's some issues with go, what's going on between our billing with BSNA or with Ferguson or, or whomever, we still did decide that we were going to go ahead and order these radios. We were, we didn't even know we were going to get any radios, and at the time Fred didn't think he can get them in, and all of a sudden he did receive a box of radios that came in. So that is the price of the box of radios, it's not his fault, because we haven't resolved the issue between our BSNA and our, our Ferguson or, um, you know, right now, but they're ready to install these radios as we requested.
Is that enough to cover all of Cloverfield?
I don't know how many he's got, but this, you know, I can get a number exactly, but he said he, boxes of them or a couple boxes of them, but I know that Cloverfield's been expanding very rapidly, I don't even know what a rate, if they put twenty houses up this year or not, but.
Well, I just wondered if that was going to be the total for all of Cloverfield.
I don't know, I think that at the time when he ordered them, that this is probably enough to cover what was built already, or what we have already on our, um, SCADA system, you know, so our billing system.
So as they're built, don't they pay for the meters, I mean, their house is going up and.
Right, but that would be an addition that we would have to put into our, so, instead of being a radio, I mean, instead of being a touchpad on the outside of house, now we're going to have a cellular read, uh, read on there. It is something that I think it was discussed just recently, with the price of the, everything going up, that we need to look at our fee schedule and make sure that we're charging enough in our building department to cover the cost of the new radios and probably the cost of the meters that are going up. So absolutely, um, but that is billed at the time, when they come in to get a building permit, they pay for this water meter at the time, and the radio would be included, but what we're dealing with is houses that are currently already been built, that are already on the system, that do have touchpads on the outside. So we need to switch out the touchpads with radios. And that was the purpose of this whole thing here. Doesn't make any sense?
So did they install them or no, not yet?
We were told them to hold off on them.
So what, what's the?
I mean, my question is, is why isn't our billing, I mean, I know we're having problems, but when are we going to be on schedule with our billing? I mean, we have proved to have the increases, we got the.
We're on schedule, we're just, it's just not right, there.
Why?
So many issues, well, for one thing, too many people are involved, too many people have their hands in it and are, you know, we're trying to work it out, and it's a huge mess, Mike.
But you're concerned about this, the radios, instead of figuring out the.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the money.
We need to get those bills up and running.
We've filled.
I know that one bill in particular is about twelve thousand dollars shy in one month, from what we charged them, ten thousand, and I know. Telling you.
I don't know what you're saying.
I'll talk to you more about it later, I'm not going to get into it, but we need to get our, we're, we're, we just borrowed another thirty-eight thousand dollars this month. We borrowed thirty-eight thousand dollars last month, we got eighty thousand dollars in water that we had to borrow from our general fund. There's something that's not right right here. We're not getting our money, your revenue's not coming in, so, but.
So, so the rate increase wasn't implemented, that was approved, is that what it is?
No, not as of right now.
Because we, you have to wait a month, but also, no, we don't have to wait a month, but the billing, we approved it and we're still catching up with the billing, so.
But doesn't our ordinance have to be updated first?
Now, this, does it changes, yes, it has been updated.
Oh, it has been updated, with these rates that we just talked about? So I don't understand what seven G is. What is the agenda item?
To just discuss that eleven thousand dollars up.
To discuss, approve it?
Well, to.